सुद्धनामत्तिक मयमुंड आवदा
Glory be to God's holy name
SIA तिरकदर्शन पुस्तकम 55 मधिकारम 10, 11 वसनंगल वासीकल्य
It is from the Book of Isaiah, the Prophet's Chapter 45, Verses 10 and 11 मारियुं उरैइंदु मलयुं वाणत्तिलरुंदु इरेंगी अव्विडत्तुकु तिरुम्पामल भूमियी ननैतु अदिल मुलैक किलंडी विलय्यम्बडी सैद्दु विदेखिरवनकु विदययुं पुसिकिरवनकु आहारत्ययुं कोडुक्रदे एप्पडियो अप्पडियी एन वायलरुंदु पुरपडुं वसनमुं इरक्कु अदु वेरुमयाय एनिडत्तुकु तिरुम्पामल अदु नान विरुम्पुग्रदे सैद्दु नान अदय अनुपिन कार्यम आघुंबडी वायकु For as the rain cometh down and the snow from heaven And returneth not thither but watereth the earth and make it It bring forth an earth that it may give seed to the sorbet and bread to the eater So shall my word be that goeth forth out of my mouth It shall not return unto my void But it shall accomplish that which I please And it shall prosper in the thing where to I send it
कथुर्य परिसूत नामत्तिक मयमुंड आवदा
Glory be to God's holy name
वाणत्तिलरुंदु अनुपपडुग्रह मलय इंदा भूमियी लेन्ना क्रियाय सैग्रदे अन्दरी वेदम सुटिकाट्टुग्रह
Word of God points out what the rain that cometh from heaven Does evoke in this earth
अदु भूमियी ननैकिरदे
It watereth the earth
विदेहिलाई मुलैक्यविकिरदे
Bringeth forth the water
विदेखिरवनकु आहारत्य अदु कोडुक्रदे
It giveth foot to the eater
इदु मलयिनुडया देवनुडे तिट्टम
This is the plan of God regarding rain
अदु बोलवे
So was it
एन वायलरुंदु पुरपडुग्रह वसनमुं इरक्कु
So shall my word be that goeth forth out of my mouth
अदु वेरुमयाय एनिडत्तुकु तिरुम्पी वरादे
It shall not return unto me void
नान ये एनई विरुम्पी अदय अनुपिन एनो अंदा कार्यम अदु वायक्कंबडी अदु सैद्दुविट्ट तान तिरुम्पो
But it shall accomplish that which I please and prosper in the thing where to I send it
इंद्रय मैसेज वसनम एन्ना सैग्रदे
Today's message, what is the word to?
इंद्रय कथुर्य वार्ते वसनम ओर मनिदनुडया वाल्विल एन्ना सैग्रदे
The word of God is, what does the word of God tell in the life of a man?
आयरकनकान वसनंगलाई नाम केटकरो
We hear thousands of words
आयरकनकान वसनंगलाई नाम पढिकरो
We even study thousands of verses
आयरकनकान वसनंगलाई पल विदंगलीले नाम उलिपै इरकरो
And we in various kinds of words interpret the words
निङल आयरकनकान वसनंगलुकु आयरकनकान वेळिपडुत्तिलियुं विलक्कंगलाईयुं निङल पेट्रुकल्य
You may have received thousands of words and thousands of revelations
देवनुडया वार्ते अन्दरी अदु वाल्लमयुलदे
But the word of God is powerful
अदु जीवनुलदे
It is life
मनिदनुडया वार्तेगलु बोल्ला देवनुडया वार्तेगल अल्ला
Word of God is unlike the word of man
देवनुडया वार्ते अन्दरी अदु दान देवन
Word of God is God
योवानिले मुदला मधिकारत्तिले नाम पार्कंबडुदे
Reading in John Chapter 1
आदिले वार्ते इरुंददे
In the beginning was the word
अंदा वार्ते देवन डत्तिले इरुंददे
And the word was with God
अंदा वार्ते देवनाय इरुंददे
And the word was God
अदु मनिदरुकु ओलियाक इरुंददे
And it was enlightened to man
अंदा वार्तेकुल जीवन इरुंददे
And there was life in it
इब्रीलान निङल अदु वार्ते वसनम इवेगले कुरितु पलयर्पाटिलु पुदियर्पाटिलु पल विदमान अकार्यंगलाई निङल केट्रकल्य पढित्रकल्य
It's both in the Old Testament and New Testament You would have learned and heard about many things about the word of God
मनिष्युनुडया वार्तेगल अलिंदु बोहु
Man's word will perish
अनल ओन्नु बेद्रो ओन्नु 23 इल सोलपट्टुदे बोले
But as it is said in 1 Corinthians 1:23
देवनुडया वार्ते अलिविल्लाद वसनम
Word of God is incorruptible
आणड़ुडया वार्ते अलिवे इल्लाद ओरु वार्ते
And the word of God is that which has no corruption
इंदा वार्तीले वाल्लमय इरकरदे
And there is power in this word
इंदा वार्तीले जीवन इरकरदे
There is life in this word
प्रिय मनवले निङल पल विदंगलीले निङल देवनुडया वार्तेगले केट्रकल्य
You would have heard the word of God in various ways
अनल अंदा वार्ते उंगलुकु इरक्रदा
But is that word in you?
वसनत्ते ओर विदेखु ओपुमयागय पल एडंगलीले नाम पार्करो
In various places we see the word of God compared to a seed
विदेखिरवन ओरु वन पुरपट्टान
A man, a sorbet when he floats
नानु एडंगलील अंदा विदेहिल पोइ विलंददाक वेदम सोलुक्रदे
And that seed fell in four grounds
ओन्ड्रे पाराइल विलुक्रदे
One upon the rock
ओन्ड्रु मुल्लुगुल कुल विलुक्रदे
The other among the thorns
ओन्ड्रु वालीले विलुक्रदे
The other by the wayside
ओन्ड्रु नल्ल निलत्तिल विलुक्रदे
The other in a good ground
अनल विदेत्त वन ओरु वन दार
But one sorbet
अवन विदेत्तु नल्ल नोक्कतोड़ दान विदेत्तान
He is sorbed with a good intention
इदु मनिदनुडया तद्पोदया निलवरत्ते सुटिकाट्टुग्रदाक ये सुच्छन्नार
Jesus said, that points to the present situation of man
उंगलुडया इरुदयमागिया नेलम एप्पुडि इरक्रदे अन्गर ओरु केल्वियोड़ दान अंदा ओमय मुडिकरदे
And that parable ends with the question saying How is your heart the ground?
इंदेकुं गुड इंदा कूट्टल निङल इरक्रेरहे
Even this morning you are in this meeting
इप्पुल्डे नान विदेखी आरंभित्रकल्य
And I have started to sow
उंगलुडय इरुदयम कल्लाक इरुक्कुम अनल
If your heart is stoning
अंदा कल्लुकुल उलंदा एप्पुडि इरुकुन निङ बारंग
Then you see how the word of God will grow in it
अंदा कल्लुकुल उलंदु दान अंदा विदेह निङल एन्ना सैद्दुरिकरे
And what will you do with that seed which has fallen on the stone?
उंगलुडय इरुदयत्ते कल्लाकिकुंडे
And making your heart a stone
ओर पाराइ बोन्र ओरु निलवरत्तोड़
As a rock
निङल इप्पुल्डु कथुर्डय वार्तेय केट्टाल
If you hear the word of God now
ओरु वेल इंदा वसनम मलच्चुद मारी उनकु ओर युरुपुदल मारी तेरिय
Maybe you feel a revival, the word of God coming out
वेलिल अडिच्छ बोलुदे
But when the sun was up
इंदा पाराइले वेरुड़ मुडियामली इदु तींदु काइंदु पोइक्रदे
It could not root into the rock but went up chokes
इल्लवो इरुदयत्तिल पल विदमान अकालकंगल दुकंगल पोराट्टंगल मांस इच्चेगल पल आशेगल कोलपंगलोडि निपवर्त वार्तेय केट्टुकुंडरिंदाल
Or if you are going to hear this word with various confusions and calamities and anxieties within you
इप्पुल्डु उनुडे नरम मुल्लुगुलुल्ला ओरु निलवरम आगरकर
Your heart is a thorny ground
अब्बा एन्ना नाटको
Then what will happen?
मोलेक्यो
It will sprout
अना वालरादे
But it will not grow
वालर विदामिन द मुल्लुगुल दिन द कावलेकर उलक अकावलाई आयसुरियत्तिन मयक्कम पेरुंदिंडी इवेगल इवेगल इन नरुकुम अन्द्र वेदम सोलुक्रदे
This pride of the world, the gluttony And the deceitfulness of riches, it will choke it up
इन्नोरु पगिलीले पार्कंबडुदे
On the other hand
एदो केटितु बोहला वंद्रको ओर साविसलाई अटन्मनो अप्पुडिंग्रन निलवरत्तल निवंदरिंदे ननी ओर वाली पोकन
If you are come with that intention somehow let me attend the service and go away You are a wayfaring man
ओर द्रुप्तिकाह
Just for satisfaction
इल्ल अटल ने सभैनुडय अंगत्तिनन अन्गर ओरु तन्मयकाह
Or just that you are a member of the church
अप्पुडि निङल इरुंदाल
If you like that
इंदा वसनम नान इप्प विदेप्प
I am sowing the word
इन्नोरु तोंदे एडतु पोइडुवा
Another will come and take it away
अप्पुडि तान बाइबल सोलुक्रदे
That's what the word of God says
इन्नोरल पारवेगल वंदु अदय एडतु कुंडु बोहु
The birds will come and catch it away
अदु विदेच्छु वेस्टापोइरदे
And that which is sown is waste
अदु मोलेक्यादु वाल ओन्नुमय इल्ल पारवय अदु तनुडय एरयाहम आत्यविडकर
The bird will take it at its prey
अरुमी अनवले इंदा वसनम्तिन तन्मय उंगलुकु एन्ना सैद्दुरिकरदे
But what is the attitude of the word done in you?
आणड़वर वाणत्तिलरुंदु अनुपुग्रह मलय आनदे
The rain that God sent it from heaven
मुदलावधि इंदा भूमियी ननैकिरदे
First of all watereth the earth
अदस विदेहिलाई मुलैक्यविकिरदे
Then makes the seed to spread
अन्न मलच्च विदेह पायराहम आत्यविडकर
And then it will make its increase
अनन देवनुडय वसनमुं अदे तोट्र तोडु अदे नोक्कतोड़ दान अनुपपडुग्रह
The word of God is same, sent with the same intention
अनन इंदा द्वयाद वसनम्तिनुडय ओरु विशेष सिस्तत सक्ति एन्ना
But what is the special power in the word of God?
अदु एरुक अनुपुनक अदुवरिकिंग वेट पनिटेरु
It will wait until it is sent
अदु चेंजितु दान अदु एन्नो पोमुडियो तिरुम्बे पोहमुडियो
Only if it accomplishes then it will return
इल्ल नान पोनय अवन तूंगितु रुंदा नान वंदुटे अब्रिंस सोल्लादे
It will not say, "I went, they were sleeping, I came back"
नान बोइ पात्ता अवन चारी इल्ल अनल वंदुटे अब्रिंस सोल्लादे
I went, I saw that person, he is not right
परत्तिलरुंदु उनकु उन्तोलिलुकु उन कुटुम्बत्तुकन्ने कथुरु ओरु वार्तय अनिप्पी इरुंदाल अंदा वार्तय उन पिन्नाले वंदुकिटेरु
Had the Lord sent a word from heaven for your family Then it will come surely toward you
नितूंगिनालु सरी
Even if you sleep
निविलित्रुंदालु सरी
Even if you awake
निपावत्तुकुल ओलंद्रुकरण दानु सरी
Even if you roll and send
इंदा वसमय एप्पुडि आयनु उनकुल्ले अनुपुन नोक्कत्ता चेयरत्तुके पोराडिकिटेरु
This word will strive to accomplish its purpose
इन्नेकी सरीरत्ल निङल पातिकिन्ना सेवप्पनुकल वेल्लयानुकल इरुकुन्ना निङ उंगलालान पढिच्चिचिर्पिंग
You would have learnt about white blood and red blood corpuscles
अदल ओरु अनु वंदु नोय एदुर्कुड़ियो ओरु सक्ति
One has the power to immunate
एदो ओरु क्रीमयो एदो ओरु सक्ति ओरु बेलविनत्तिन वाल्लमय इंदा सरीरत्तुकुल पुंदुविटाल
If a power of weakness penetrates into our body
इंदा सक्ति अदु एदुर्क्रदे
This power resists
एप्पो एदुर्पु सक्ति कोराइदो
When this immunative power decreases
अप्पो अंदा बेलविनम यादी अंदा क्रीमी उनकुल्ले निंद्रुविडकरदे उने आठ कुंडुविडकरदे
Then the sickness, the weakness prevails over our body
इदु दान इन्नेको उलकत्तिल अप्प सरीरत्ल नाटकर तन्मय
This is the thing, function of a body
अनन इंदा वसनम एन्ना बनुक्रदे
But what does the word of God do?
अदय नाम विलंगिकोल्ला वेंडिद अवश्य
We need to understand that
इन्नोरल कथुर्डय वार्तेकु प्रिय सक्ति उंडे
Because there is a great power in the word of God
कथुर्डय काडुगलाई कोलुत्तुम
The word of God, it will burn for us
बेदुरुकलाई मुरिक्कु
It will break down seeds
पेमानाई ईनाविक्कु
Make the hinds to calf
अदु ओरु कन्मलय उडक्कुम सम्मति
It is a harm which break it down the road
ओरु वसनम ओरु तुनिकरमान ओर आलित्ता ओरु वसनम पेसिचिना अवं इरुदय ओढंज अंगे उलंद्रु
If a word is gone to a bold person, his heart will break and he will fall down
रोट्ल ओर आल्ड वेळिकूट्ट नाटितु रुंदार
And the person was conducted in an open meeting
अब्बा ये सु मन्निकिरवर्नु पेसिचितु
And he announced, "Jesus forgives"
आविगलाई मन्निकिरारुनु पेसिन्न
He forgives sinners
ये सु कृष्णु दत्तान सगल आवंगले निकुन्न सोन्नार
The blood of Jesus Christ cleanseth all sins
ओर दन गरिटेरु
One man was hearing
अब्बा उन जनाम मन्निकिर उन्मयामय मन्निपरा
He said, "Billy, surely forgive?"
अमा एदो चिन्न चिन्न तपुसंज्या मन्निचरला
Yes, little sins it may be forgiven
ओरु कोलगारन मन्निपरांग अब्रिंस काटा
Will he forgive a murderer?
अहिवर आमंटार
He said, "Yes"
चरित ओरु कोला संजिता अरियाम संजिता राइट ओके मन्निच्तार नसोलिंग रेंडु कोला संज्या
As if he once committed with his innocence and does it the requisite time
इप्पो अवन इटिकेटिकिटे वरा काउंटिंग कूटिकिटे वरा
Kept on increasing the count and asking
पदनारुकु वंदुटा
He came to sixteen murders
इप्पे एल्ला जनंगल वेडिक पतितेरुकांग
Now they were all spectating
इंदाल वसमा माटिकिटा इवंट
And he is being caught
एल्लादुक मन्निकरार मन्निकरार नसोलिटेरुकर
He kept on saying, "Jesus forgives"
एनल सोल्लामु पोमुडियादियो ओरु राउडी
Because he was a rowdy
अहिवर इन्नोरु तप्पीम पोमुडियादे
And he cannot escape that man
इप्पो अवन केटिटेरुकार इन्नो जोलिकिटेरुकर
Kept on asking and he also kept on He went for sixteen murders
अप्पुम अवन जनाम ये सु कृष्णु विन रत्तम सगल आवंगले निकी नमै सुत्ती इरिकुन्न सोन
Even then the evangelist said, "The blood of Jesus Christ cleanses those from sin"
पोटुन अंदा तुन्मार्कन काल्ल विलंदु नान दान अंदा पदनारु कोलसंज्या आणड़ुडे ने मन्निकी सोलंग
Suddenly the wicked man, he fell down at his feet and said, "I committed sixteen murders"
इन्नो मन्निकरारुनु दान वार्ते ये सु विन रत्तत्तिल उल्ला सक्तिया कुरिचु पेसुंदु अदा अनुकु टच्चाइडिच
Yes, when he spoke about the power in the blood of Jesus Christ, it touched him
ओरु कूट्टलियो उनकु ओरु वार्ता वरो
Every meeting you have a word for you
अदा वार्ते निक करेक्टाक अच्छ पन
And exactly hold that word
एप्पो करेक्टापुडिचिक्रयो
When you hold it up
अदु उनकुल्ला महत्तान ओरु वेले चय
Then it will do a glorious work in you
इन्नोरल इंदा वार्ता वरुंबुलुदे कन्मलय उडक्कु अदु ओरु सम्मति आन
Because this word is a hammer which breaketh the rock
एवरेयरकल निर्भत्तिल इंदा वार्तेन सक्तिये अंदे एवरेय निर्भक करंथली वाहक पेसुक्र
Power of the word is written by the Hebrews, the writer to the Hebrews
एवरेयर नांगा मधिकारम पनि रेंडा वसनत्तिल इंदा सक्तिय जीवन वसनम्तिन सक्तिय पारंग
Hebrews 4:12 says about the word of life
आपरेशन देटरलान तोतु बोहु
It's like an operation theatre देवनुडय वार्तय आनदे जीवनु वाल्लमयु उल्लादायु इरुपुरमु करुकुल्ला एन्ना पट्टैतिलु करुकानदायु आत्मावयुं आविययुं कणुकलयुं ऊनयुं पिरिकत्तकदाग उरुव कुत्तुग्रदायु इरुदयत्ति निनेवुगलाईयुं योसुनिगलाईयुं वगयरुक्रदायु इरक्रदे For the word of God is quick and powerful And sharper than any two-edged sword Piercing even to the dividing asunder of soul and spirit And of the joints and marrow And is a designer of the thoughts and intents of the heart
एन्ना मनिष्युनीयो अप्पुडिये निपाट्य अवनक सर्विपडितिरदे देवनुडय वार्ते
The word of God easily surgerizes any man who stands in front of it
अनुकुल रुक्र सील अपुदिकिडो
It will take away his pass
अवुंडे रुक्र कायत्ता आर्चो
And it will bind up his wounds
अवन आपरेट पन्नोदे उकान्दे एन्न एन्न अल्ला उडक्कनो एडुक्कनो अदुक तेरिय
It will conduct a surgery in a right manner
अमा कथुर्डय वार्ते यनकुल्ले इप्रिपट्टा सैलय सैद्दुकुंडे रुक्रदे ओवरनाल यने उडक्किदे उरुवाक्कुन्न सोलरुंग अंदे एक्सपीरियंस रुक्रुंग कायगलावेतु रल्लिल्लिया सोलंग नितूंगिनाल इंदा वसनम उन पिन्नाल तूंगामन निन्निटेरु
Even if you sleep, the word of God is a way to work
अदु कृबयुल्ला वार्ते
It is gracious word
अदु जीवन वाल्लमयुल्ला वार्ते
Word of life and power
अदु उनुडय उल्लत्त कुत्ती एडुत्त सरिपड़त्तुकुड़िय वार्ते
Word which divides us under your heart
आविनालुम बेलत्तिनालुम अक्किनीनालु उरुदिपड़त्तपट्टा वार्ते
A word that is sanctified, the word that is confirmed by spirit and power
कथुर्डय वार्तेनुडय सक्ति बायंगरमानदे
Yes, the power of the word of God is extremely
अदु निक अनेकरुक तेरियादे
Many do not know it
कथुर्डय वार्तेलाल उल्ला सक्ति अनेकरुक पुरियादे
Many do not understand the power in the word of God
आणड़ुडय वार्ते ओरु मनिष्युनुकुल वंदा
If the word of God comes into a man
अदु आविनालुम बेलत्तिनालुम अक्किनीनालु उरुदिपड़त्तपट्टा वार्तेग
It has been confirmed by fire and spirits
कथुर्डय सोर्कल येलुदरम येलुदरम पुडमडपट्टा वेख
The word of God is trialed seven times
अरु ओरु ट्रिप सोना अवलदा
And once he says, "It's okay"
अदुके परगा अदु मात्युग्र देवमुं मल्ल
After that, he never changes it
अवरुड़ तिलुंदु ओरु कमांड वंदुरचिन्ना अवर सोल्ला आहो
He speaks and it is done
अवर कटलेडा निर्क्क
He commands and it stands fast
अनल दान ओरु वारमुनी वरुंबोदु ओरु वार्तय निपुडिचितु पोन
Therefore every time you come, hold on to the word of God
उनकुन्न वरुक्र अंदा वार्ते निएडतु कोल्डन
Take up the word that is for you
अंदा वार्ता चुम्मा पोहादे
And that word will not go again
अदु करेक्ट टाइटल वंदुपेस
It will speak to you at the right time
अदु उनुडय मनस आठकोल्ड
It will take control of your mind
अदु नाम विलंगिकोल्ला वेंडिद अवश्य
Understand this clearly
इंदिकी देवनुडय वार्ते एन्ना सैग्रदे
What does the word of God do today?
अदुन अंदा अलिविल्लाद वित्त एन्ना सैग्रदे
What does the incorruptible seed do?
अदय नाम विलंगिकोल्ला वेंडिद अवश्य
We need to understand this
मार्कन नालुल निङ बार्कंबडुदे
Turn to Mark, the verse chapter 4
विशास वंदु इंदा वसनत्ते एडतु पोरुरुकु निङ एडंगुडुतरारिंग
Don't give place for the devil to take away the word of God
अदु इरुंदा दान वालरो
Only if it is there, it will grow
मार्कन नालु पदनांझु पारंग
4:15 of Mark the Gospel वसनत्ते केट्ट उडने सात्थान वंदु अवरक इरुदयंगली विदेकपट्टा वसनत्ते एडतु पोडुग्रान
इप्पन आपरसंगमण राय
I am preaching
उने तूंगोट्रो
He will make you to sleep
नान कायंगरमा कथुरु अदु उनकु तालाटुम मरुक
I will tell with immense force, but you will be like a lullaby for you
अब्बा एन्ना नारंदिचे
Then what happens?
इंदा वसनम कंट्रोल पन्नुरुकुम नाल इन्नोरु तोंनी अनुकंट्रोल पन्निरा
Even before the word of God takes control, another comes control of you
नान मथ्येवल नसुविशेषम्म नियादियामत्ते एडतु पढिचित्रप
When I am speaking about Matthew's Gospel, you will read Genesis
निबाइबल दान्दा पढिकर पढ़राम्म
The devil will say, "You're reading the Bible, you read it"
अनन नान ह्याम्परसंग मथ्येवल बोइकिटरुको उन्या आदियामत्ता पातुकिटे रेबेक काल अंगे पोन यान नियांग पोन
I will be preaching from Matthew's Gospel, but you will be reading in Genesis
उनकुन्न कान्संट्रेशन इल्ल उनकुन्न ओरु मनत्ता कोडुक्रान द आवि
The spirit that diverts your attention
नान प्रसंगमणुवे
I preach
नियाप्पन्न उनकु वेलिया पोनुनु ओरु सिंदवर
It is then you want to have the thought to go out
नान प्रसंगमणुवे
I preach
अप्पन्न उन्तोलिलाई टप्पाल उडिकिटे बिस्किट कुडुतिकिटे ब्लैंडिकिट्रप
Then you want to play with your child
इदल्लामे सात्थानुडय वाल्लमयुल्ला ओरु सक्तियान ओरु सैल This is all the powerful work of the devil नान जोल्लदे तप्पा
Is it wrong?
वसनत्त विदेच्छ उडने पट्टन तुकिर्वा अवन वसन
Soon when the word of God is sown, he catches it away, why?
एन
Why?
अवनकु तेरियो इदु इरुंदा अदा अनुपुन कार्यत्त चेंजितु दान निसयो पोहु
He knows that if the word of God is there, it will return only and accomplish that
ओरु बिमात्त कार्यकुल्ले इंदा वसनम वरुम अनल
If the word of God comes to word
अंदा वसनम अवन अन्य मुन्नियत्तुकुल कुंडु वंदु
It will lead you to progress
सागर निलवरत्तिल एरुकुन उनकु इंदा वसनम वंदुरचिन्ना
He that is lying unto death, but if it comes to him
वेलिया वान नान वंदुरुवा
And he will say, "Come forth and he will come out"
विलंद्दु कडक्कर उनकु इंदा वार्ते वरुम अनल
He that has fallen, if he gets the word
अवन एलंद्दु नारंदुरुवा
He will rise up and walk
पारवेट्टु उनकु इंदा वार्ते कडेकुम अनल
If this word goes to the blinds
अवन कन्न तेरंदुरो
He will receive sight
अब्बा कच्चे कादय केकाद उनकु इंदा वार्ते उल्ले बोहुम अनल
He that is deaf will receive the word
अवन काद तेरंदुरो
His ears will be open
इदु दान देवनुडय वार्तेनुडय सक्ति
This is the power in the word of God
अदु दान अमय एन्ना पन्नरा इंदा वसनम वरुंबोलुदे कैच पन्नर
Therefore the devil catches away the word
विलंद्दु उडने तप्पुन तुकिर्वा
Soon when it falls, he takes it away
उन्या बाइबल्ला कान्संट्रेशन पन्नु वडमाटा
You cannot concentrate on the Bible
काठुडय वार्ते केक्क वडमाटा
You cannot hear the word of God
उनकु अरुम्यात तूक्कुम गुंडोरुवा
He will give you a good sleep
वरादे नसोल्लर
And I say, "Don't come" You don't come
देवनुडय वार्ते केक्क सक्ति इल्लाद अवन सक्ति इल्लाद अवल वरादे
If you don't have the power to hear the word, don't come, why?
एन अंदा वार्ते नान तिरुम्बतिरुम सोल्लर
Why I do say repeating?
विशासुगुलुम देवनुडय वसनत्तुकु नाडुंगुकेन
Because even the devil tramples at the word of God
देवनुडय वार्तेकु पिशास नाडुंदुदे
The devil tramples at the word of God
निङ इंदी वंदु तूंगुरुदनाले निकेट्ट वसनमय उने नियायंदिरु
By coming and sleeping here, the word that you hear will judge you
तूंगी अलच्चिमनी मात्त वसनंगला गवनिच्छि बुक्का पढिच्छि अंग अंग नेट्ट नोट्नीदे इंदी उकान्द्दे सल्ला कायल एडतु टे नाले इंदा वसनम उने नियायंदिरु
When you despise the word of God after coming to the presence of God, the word of God will judge you
योवान पनिरंडन 48 एन्ना सोलुक्रदे
John 42:48, what does it say? एन्ने तल्ली एन वार्तेगल एच्चुकोल्लाद अवने नियायंतिर्क्रद ओन्ड्रु इरक्रदे नान सोन्न वसनमय अवने कडेसी नाली नियायंतिर्क
निं इंदा पेंदे कोसे सभैलाई उकान्दु ओरु वारमुनी केट्ट वसनमय उन्या नियाय तिर्पुगलतु पिडो
The word that you heard being seated in the church will judge you on that day
उनकु इंदा वार्तेनुड़ि जीविक्य मुडिलन्ना कथावी इंदा वसनत्तिल उल्ला जीवन नानकु तांगन केल
If you cannot leave as per the word, ask the Lord for the strength
इन्नोल अमुडियाले इन्न केल
You say, "It's impossible for me"
अन्न अवरे नानक अरुलचिगिन केल
Lord, help me, grant me
ओरु मनिष्युन सोल्लर उम्रडय कर्पनिगलिलु पडि वोडन नान वांचिकर
A man says, "I desire to run through thy commandments"
उम्रडय वसनत्तिन बलन नानकु तारो
Give me the strength of thy word
संगीतत्तिल ताविद एन्ना सोल्लर
What does Psalm say?
नुति पत्तम्बोदाम संगीतम
Psalm 119
55 वसनत्तिल एन्ना सोल्लर
And verse 81
आणड़वरे उम्रडय वार्तेकाह वसनत्तुकाह नान काठ्त कडकर
Lord, I wait for thy word
ओरु वार्ता सोलिन्ना नान काठ्त रुकर अंदा मात्तमा के लेपार्दलायुक
Speak a word to me and it will be a rest unto my soul उम्रडय रच्चिपुकु एन आत्मा तविकिरदे उम्रडय वसनत्तुकु काठ्त रुकरे
काठ्त रुकर स्वामी उम्रडय वसनत्तुकु दान नान काठ्त रुकर
Lord, I hope in thy word
इन्नोरल उम्रडय वसनत्तुके एवलो ब्रिय सक्ति इरुकुन्ना इप्पक केक्क पोरिंग
Because you are going to hear the power in the word of God
आणड़वडय वार्तेकाह काठ्त किटेरु
Keep on hearing for the word of God
नियो ओरु वेल नोंदु ओडिंज्जी नोरूंगि पोइ वंदुर
You may be broken, weary altogether
अंदन नेरत्तुकु वार्ता उने टच्पन्नुरुक वरो
But the word of God will come to touch you then
अदु निपेट्रुटेरु निजीवन रण्जिर
Receive it and receive life
नुति पत्तम्बोदाम संगीतम नुति 47 असन्न
Psalm 119, verse 147 अधिखालिल नान एलंदु सत्तमिट्टे उम्रडय वसनत्तुकु काठ्त रुकरे I premonced the dawning of the morning and cried, "I hoped in thy word"
उम्रडय वसनत्तुकु दान नान कालेला काठ्त रुकर
Yes, wait for thy word in the dawn
पासु जॉयल अवरकल अडिकिरी चोलुक्र
My word, Pastor Joel used to say
एलंबुंबोदे ओरु वार्तयोड़ एलंबुन सोल
Right when you arise, arise with this word
एलंबुंबोदे डेईली एलंबुंबोदे ओरु वार्तयोड़ एलिमिवा
Every day arise with a word from God
एनावु ओरु वसनम कालेलियो उन्डपेसिन्नो
And the word of God will speak to you in the morning
कालेले एलंबुंबुलुदे निसरियान ओरु वसनत्तोड़ वार्तयोड़ जीवनोड़ एलंबुन
Right when you awake, awake with the life in the word of God
इन्नेकी वसनत्त पति अनेकरुक विलक्कल्ला अनल एल्यु पोटुचिरकांग वीटल मुट्टु वसनम तोंगुदे
Many do not have revelation about the word of God, but they hang a boats in their houses
वसल एल्यु पोटुर्बांग वादय उन कोडारत्ते अनुकादे
They will have the word that evil plague shall not come near dwelling
वेटुकुल्ला पोना मुनु बेटु बोटु मुनुवर्ब पड्डुकड़
There will be three beds and all the three will be lying down
वादय उन कोडारत्ते अनुकाद नसोलिटि इंदी मुनुवर्ब याम पड्डुर्क
And when it is said that there shall no plague come near the dwelling, why are you lying down? It's not a wrong
नान बरियासत्तुकु नसोल्लाल
I am not mocking
अंदा वादय कोडारत्ता अनुक कुडाद
The plague should not come near dwelling
ओरु वीट रत्तन देलिकपट्टा वीट आरुन्ना संगारदद उल्ला वरमाटा
If your house is sprinkled with blood, the destroyer will not come
निबस्कावय सरियाय अनुसरित रुंदाल
If you observe the passover
सत्र उल्ला वरुद्दुक अधिहारंग कड़य
Then the destroyer has no power to enter
अनुरु देवनुडय वार्ते केटिटु नल्ल अरुनचिन्न सोलिटु पोरुदुके प्रियक साधनय अल्ल
It's not a big achievement to say it is good after hearing the word of God
ओरु सलरकु डेईली मार्क पोडिटेरु
Some every time bring the score
एक्साम्नर मार्ग उकान्दुकांग इंद्रय प्रसंगत्तुकु 30 मार
They say, "Thirty marks for today's message"
इंद्रय मैसेज कारमाक इरुंददे
And it was hot enough
इंद्रय प्रसंग पुलिप्पाक इरुंददे
It was even sour enough
इंदिकी नॉट बै
It's not bad
इब्रीलान चोल्डर आलिंगलायुकर
Yes, there are people who mark it
इदु पोडुरुदुकु उनकु वंदु नियो नियो सभैलापुडि आरयो पोस्टिंग कुडुत्ते एप्पुडि प्रसंगमण रारलायुल्ला इल्ल
God has not appointed you to mark the message
कथुर्डय वार्ते उनकुल्ले ओरु तिट्टतोड़ अनुपु
But the word of God is sent with a plan
परलम वाणत्तिलरुंदु वरुक्र अमलयो ओपिट्टु परत्तिलरुंदु वरुक्र वार्ते सोलपट्टुक्र
The word from heaven is compared to the rain from heaven
अदु ओरु नोक्कतोड़ दान मलय देवन अनुपुर
God sent it the rain with a purpose
अदु मनिष्युरलुक आहारत्ते कोडुक्नो
It gives food to the eater
अदु बोल
So was it
एनुडय वार्ते नान अनिप्पन कार्यम आघुंबडी वाय
The word that is sent will accomplish the thing that I please
अब्बा कथुर्डय अंटे एवलो पेसिरुक्रदा इन्न नेरवरली अब्रिन ओरु क्वस्टिन उनकु वरो
Then you may have a question, the Lord has spoken so much, it's not fulfilled yet
अदु उन्ड चन्न वार्ते इन्न तिरुम्पी पोहल
That is not it returned
अदु उन्या फॉलो पन्निटु दारुक
It is pursuing you
उनकु दान वरुद्द
I will come with you
अदु नेरवर ओरुकी अदु उन पिन्नाल वरो वंदुकिटुरुक
Until it is fulfilled, the word of God is behind you
Sharp, correct title अप्पुडिये नेरवर
At the right time, it will be fulfilled
यनकाह अनुपपट्टा वार्तेगल एन्नोडु खुड़े एन्पिन्ने एन्नोडु खुड़े इरुक्रदे नसोलरुंग विश्वास्त्तल रुक्रुंग कायगलावेतुन मुदलावु दि इंदा वार्तेनुडय सैल एन्ना
First of all, what is the work of the word of God?
नान ओर आरु यालु एट्टो वय उम्बोदो पत्तो वार्तेगल उनकु मुन्बाक विकिर
Let me list out nine to ten points about it
याकोबु मुदला मधिकारम
James 1
18 वसनत्तिन्न बडी
Verse 18
इंदा वसनत्तुनुडय मुखियमानत्त तिट्टम एन्ना
What is the important plan of the word of God? अवर सित्तम कोण्ड तम्मुडय सृष्टिकलील नाम मुदर्पलंगल आवदरकु नम्मय सत्य वसनत्तिनाले जनिपित्तार Of his womb will be can he ask with the word of truth That we should be a kind of first fruits of his creatures
इंदिक नाम वासीकुंबडु अवुडय वसनत्तिनाले नाम सत्य वसनत्तिनाल मुदर्पलनाय मारुम्बडिया
That we might become first fruits through the word of truth
इंदा सभैलाई इवलेवेर रुकिंग
So many here in the church
इन्न रम्बवेर वरल
And many are not at home
अनेयकम मनेवीमार वंदुरकांग अपुरुषनकान
Many wives are here but not husbands
अडेयक पुरुषनमार वंदुरकांग मनेवीमार
Many husbands are here but not wives
अनेयक पेटरल उंडु पिल्लेगल वरल
Many parents here but not children
अनन इंदी वसनम एन्ना सोलुक्रदे
But what is the word of God saying?
इंदिक इरुक्र जनंगलुकुल्ले इंदा वसनम ओरु कूट्टत्तारी मुदर्पलनाय मार्च
And from among a group of people is changed by this word as first fruits
इंदा सभैलाई ओरु कूट्टत्ते कथुरु मुदर्पलनाय मार्च
The Lord changes a group of people from this church as first fruit
ओरु सलर इंदा सभैलाई अस्सब्सक्रेबर आवचिर
Some are kept as subscribers in the church
अदु संदादार
Subscribers
अदु कास्कुडुरुकुन्न ओरु सलर आवचिर
Just to give the money
अदुके निविंग चम्बाज चम्बाज चिस सभैलावंदु कानी कुडुतिकिप
They earn, give the offering and go away
ओरु सलर अप्पुडियाल्ल
Some are not like that
अवरकल इंदा सभैलामुदर्पलंगलाय वेख
God wants to make them first fruit of the church
सभैलामुदर्पलंगल एन्ना दे सत्यत्त काहन निर्कुड़ियो ओरु कूट्टम
First fruit of the church means those who stand for the truth
इंदिक कोरिंदियरला पाकल्ला
Turn to Corinthians
इल्लाव्टन रोमरला पाकल्ला
Or to Romans
सभैलाले मुदर्पलनान अवरलाई निङल पार्कमुडि
You can see the first fruits in the church
सभैलाल अनेकिरुंद अवरुलुकुले मुदर्पलनाक इरुंदा ओरु कूट्टत्ते नाम पार्कमुडि
And we can also see first fruits who were in the beginning in the church
रोमर 16:4
Romans 16
नान्गे ऐंदे वसनंगल
Verses 4 and 5 अवरकल एन प्राणनुकाह तंगल कलुत्तय कोडुत्त अवरकल अवरकलाई पच्ची नान मातिरमल्ल पुरजादियारील उंडान असभैयार एल्लारुम नंजरिर्दल अवरकल अवरकलुडय वीटिले कोडिवरुग्र सभैयुं वाल्तंगल अहायाविले कृष्टुकु मुदर्पलनाकिय एन पीरियमान एप्पनत्ते वाल्तंगल
अन्न बारंग कृष्टुकु मुदर्पलनाकिय एप्पन
An appanite who is the first fruit into Christ
अंदा सभैलामुदर्पलंगल
First fruit in the church
अब्रिन नाम मुदल्ला वंदु रच्चिकपट्टा अवरकल अल्ल
It means not the first saint
सत्यत्त काहे अवरकल मुदर्पलंगलाय निन्ड्र अवर
They who stood as first fruits for the truth
ओरु चर्चिला ओरु आविकुरिय संददि एलंबो अदु ओरु मुदर्पलन
There will be a spiritual generation in a church which is the first fruit
अंदा मुदर्पलनल रुंदु ओरु कूट्टो ऊलियत्तुक वरो अदु मुदर्पलंगली मुदर्पलन
And from that first fruit, one group will come for the ministry That is the first fruit of the first fruit
अनल तान वसनम जोलुक्रदे मुदर्पलंगली मुदर्पलनान अवरक
That is why those are first fruit among the first fruits
ये सु मुदर्पेय आनवर मुदर्पलनान
Jesus was the first born and the first fruit
अब्रित तान वेदम सोलुक्र
That's how the word of God says
ओरु नु कोरिंदियर 16:15
1 Corinthians 16:15
अंग इन्नोर इन्नोर कूट्टुम्बम मुदर्पलनाय मारिन्दा का वेदम सोलुक्र
Another family who became first fruits सगोदररे स्तेवानुडय वीटार अहाय नाटिले मुदर्पलनान अवरकल इन्ड्रु परिसुत्तवांगलुक ऊलियन सय्यम्बडीक तंगले ओप्पुवित्त रुक्रार्गल इन्ड्रु अरिंद्रुक्रीर
इंदिक ओरु कूट्टत्तार मुदर्पलंगलाय मार्चपट्टार
One group who became the first fruit
अब्बा इदल्लन्न एन्ना विलंगिकोल्ल
What do we understand from this?
ओरु कूट्टन जनंगल मुदर्पलनाक सभैलाई मारुरुलाक अंड्रक्के वाल्न्द्रुक्र
It's right on that thing, it's a, they were a group who became first fruit in the church
इंदिक एत्न वेर अप्पुडिपट्टा अवरलाई नाम इमाट
How many of us want to change the life?
इंदा वसनम ओरु तुनुकुल्ला वंदा
Once the word of God comes to a man
अवन ओरु नार्मल नामीनल कृष्टियानाक नामीनल बिल्वराक इरुक्विड
He cannot never again remember a nominal Christian
कुजन्ने नाल कलिच्छ अवन ड्रेसमार्च
Then he changes his dress style
अवुंडे बुत्तिय मार्च
Then his knowledge
अवुंडे पलकवलकत्त मार्च
He changes his habits
अवुंडे सादार्न तन्मय मार्च असादार्नमान अवनाय माट
The word makes him extraordinary
अवुंडे प्रेयर लाइफ मार्च
The word changes his prayer life
अवुंडे विश्वास्त्त वालर्चियादे वेकिद
She makes her faith grow
प्रदिष्ट उल्लवनाय अवनाय माट
Makes him consecrated
अन्बुल्ल अवनाय माट
Makes him loving
सकीपु तन्मय अवनाय माट
Makes him enduring
विश्वास्त्तका पोराडुक्र अवनाय माट
Makes him strive for the faith
ओरु लिमिट वरुंबुलुद अवन अन्य परिसुत्तवानाय माट
And then makes him a saint
इप्पो अवन सभैलाओरु मुदर्पलन
Now he is a first fruit in the church
इंदा वसनम बारंग निङ चला विदेहिल विदेकपट्टुग्रदे अदे एडतु नम्म पुसिच्चुरो इल्लाव्टन आहारमा माटिकिर
And you see, the word of God when it is being sown, we make it a food or we try to eat it
अनन ओरु सीतर एन्ना सेरांग
But some others
अंदा विलंज्जत्तिल ओन्ने एडत्तर
Out of the increase, they take one
अदु विदेहिल
That is being sown
अदु मरुबुड़ि विदेक्कम्बडियाक वेख
And it's kept to be sown again
अदनल दान इन्नेकी वरिकुम भूमिलाई एल्लामय विदेच्कपट्टु वरुक
That is why until today, they keep on sowing
अदु बोल
So was it
इंदा मुदर्पलंगल दान सभैनुडय विदेहिल
The first fruits are the seed of the church
इवन अपोय एंगयादु ओरु एडत्तल वच्छा अंगयु मुलक्यारम
And if you keep him anywhere, he will again start to sprout
नियाबिसला पोनालु सरी
Whether you go to the office
अलेला पोनालु सरी
Or to the work spot
कम्पनीकु पोनालु सरी
Or to the company
Business center कु पोनालु सरी
Or to the business
नन्बरकल्लूरी एंग एंग निपोनालु सरी
Friends, colleagues, wherever it is
रच्चिपे इल्लाद एडंगल्द निपोनालु सरी
Even to places aren't safe
अंगयु निमुदर्पलनान इरुंदा नियो रु वेद अंगिनी कृष्टुकाह निवालर्चियाद
Even there, if you are a first fruit, you are a seed and you will grow for Christ
अनल तान वेदम वसनम चोल्लुक्रदे सत्य वसनत्तिनाल नम्म जनिपित्ता
That's why word of God says, "He begat by the word of truth"
इंदा वसनम ओरु मनिष्युनुकुल्ला वरुंबुलुद अवन अमुदर्पलनाय माट
When this word comes into a man, it makes him first fruit
इत्तर वर्ष इंदा सत्यत्त केकरिंगला उनकुल्ला एन्ना चेंजिंग
When you hear this truth, what is the change happening in you?
एन्ना वालर्चि
What grows?
एन्ना मुदर्चि
What maturity? what maturity
enna alavula ningal ungaludiyan nelavartala matthupatturukkara
in what extent you have changed yourself
paaviyaga erundho
we were sinners
Eesu namarachita
Jesus saved us
ippondu namdeyunadiyavillakala irukkara
now we are the sons of God
ana ipriyadey deyunadiyavillan chelitukada chithuthu poemudiyala
but we cannot keep on going being the children of
and the polandithanmeelai irukkumudiyala
we cannot be childish ever
analam
but
aver vilipadumudhu eprii mariirpo
when he appears how shall we change
averkku opayirpo
we shall be like
adu da mudarpalanudiyatanme
that is the extent of first fruit
aranatha vasana onakulla anupappattadunidhi noka over naal onakulla oru maru rubam
therefore an empty transformation through the word that is sent to you
chidi neenakeyokkaeta pressanga onakulla varu
suddenly a message you heard on the other day will come to you
ennekeyopadichor vasana onda pace
the word the words that you studied will come into you
chidi neenipadukkambo dhu or vasana kakekko
suddenly you will hear the voice of God
inla ulathala or vasan thondro
or a word in your heart
iprii ovunna onna onakulla idaybadu
step by step it will deal with you
ah aprii pacee and the vasana onakulla vandrichin chonnana
and once that word of God comes into you
adu onniya thungavada
it will not make you to sleep
vasana vathichit oru veday vathichit namu poyiru
once we sow the seed we go
ah adukenni bachi uttu poidu
we just water and go off
nee poi thungi duva
you will go and sleep
and the vedha thungu da
but will that seed sleep
ah kanjuvunadu marada irukko
it will be as though it's dried up
adukkula enna irukkun namukka pakkamudiyada pakkunana asapatti na vedha chethu po
we cannot see what is inside it if you want to see it it will die
ana kaleli ninga poi pathienna
but in the morning you can see
enna vanduride oru melo vanduride
the sprouts
adu thungada
it will not sleep
aranatha chonne onakku naan anupappattavartavam pinala yada vandukitturuka
the word that is sent for you will come behind you
nee paavam seedhal adu onodu pace
if you sin it will speak to you
ma nee idu tappe
my son is wrong
idu tavar
it's wrong
nee vinji pora
you go behind
avasiyamilla
it's not necessary don't interfere come on
inda edathala nikka da
don't stand here
ibridlan paceeda
is it speaking to you
inda experience la irkayarka
do you have this experience
irundhal oni mudarpalanai adu matthu
if it is there you will be changed first fruit
illa yalu munna ra okande cinema pathalum besaradu illa
oh even if we see cinemas this word of God is not instructing me
rendu munna ran chanda pottaalum onarve varla
even if I struggle for two hours I do not convicted
station ponaalu butti varla
even if I go to the police station I am not convicted
abhina enna arta
that means
vasana taava eduthu poida
the word of God is taken away
nee vaadu chanda voda onake enda andha vasana ama apritha chuluganga apriimba
you will shout as you like and say they are like that
ana vasana onakulla irundichin
but the word of God is in you
and the time muddinja oni okande aluva
after that time and you will cry
and the varu vandu pedhritto or warthasunna
the Lord said to Peter
seval kuvarukkumunbaga nee enne mune visay marudalipai
before the cock crow twice you will deny me twice
appa avan talila adu ovunna so soo du ovunna yaarla
that time he could not harken to it he said no lord
ipa modal marudalipu muddinjirchi
but now the first denial over
workout aha la
it was not working at all
enna vudhi marudalipu nandrichi
second denial
ovunna unda la
he could not understand
muna vudhi marudalipu muddinja odane yaar katiita pedhrit katiita na yaar katiita seval katiitchi
after the third denial cock crow
adu kattuna odane ivam pata pataan tirichita onu kapana oh something wrong thirimi patha Eesu vana tha badirundha
it is then he was convicted turned back and saw Jesus looking he was broken
noringi poi veriya poi oh no kandala iprii tavaruppini tene
he was totally broken down and cried and wept
and the warthay oni time pathu norikichu pathingla
you see at the right time the word of God broken
aranatha marudalithu ponaavan pudipikupadukkada koodada kariyamindra vasanamey sonnalum and the marudalithu ponaavanai tedi ponaavukaarano inda vasanathinala alududunala
therefore even though the word of God says it is impossible to eliminate those who have denied the word of God convicted him because it went behind him
naadi kadi pressangammantray po elladu
I very often preach
rendu veer parthukundhar
two slept together
oru tom poida
one was taken away
rendu veer thiri gaarachanga
two were grinding
oru ti poida
one was taken away
rendu veer vayal la irundanga
two were in the field
oru tom poida
one was taken away
sari rendu veerla thirugarachikitna right okay rendu veeru mudduchidha irundanga ovunna poichu ovunna kayutti
two were grinding they were awake one was taken away
thugi kitrina may epriya pona
but how he could he was sleeping went away
rendu veer dhanan thungiitukara
two were sleeping
Eesu arumodhu thungunamay eprii po muddinjude
when Jesus came how the man who slept could go away
avan kula ikkara vasanam thungala
because the word of God did not sleep
avan kula ikkara abhishekant thungala
because the announcing did not sleep
avan kula ikkara pradistay thungala
consecration in him did not sleep
avan kula ikkara viswastan thungala
faith in him did not sleep
aranatha manavadi chulugira naan ni tharey panninen
therefore the bride says I sleep
enne edayamo vilithirundadu
but my heart weakens
edayam vilichirundanala athma maneseru de andha trumpet sound kaiditchi
heart was awake so heard the trumpet
ah aprii nee thungala adu ovunna tadayala tavarala
you can sleep it is not a wrong
vasana onakulla veerodu irukkano
but the word of God should be still alive
nee mudarpalanai adu matthu
it will make you the first fruit
Jakobu onnamadigaram yirupati oora vasanam
James one twenty one
vasanam athumaavai rachikpada
word of God will save your soul
aha yaal ningal ellavida alukkayum kodiyat thurkkunathayum olithu vitte umgal ulathil naattapattadaayum umgal athumakali rachikavallamayulladu vallamayulladuma irukkara vasanathay saandama eechu koligal
therefore lay apart all filtiness and super beauty of naughtiness and receive with makness and gen graph word which is able to save your souls
athumaavai rachikakudiyavartay
word which is able to save your souls
ongalde athumavakurithu ungalke epplidime oru kavanaraka
ever be aware of your soul
ninga sarirathakurithu rambaga onapudri
you're very much worried about your body
yada kodichinna tadumarriyaa yada koranchischna rambadadumarriyaa
over loss of weight loss you are you are stumbling
sugar kodichinna ungalukka mohamay mariidu
if the sugar increases your face is fraught
odane shapada matthi vanga anneke kodumikala kodichirua
soon they have their diets
enna ungalukka thiri ide ide kodiyiruke ide koranchiruke
because they know the condition of their body
sarirathakurithu ungalke rambaga onapudri
you are much attentive about your body
enna arakurithu oru baharama
because you have a burden about it
ahadukka ninga avlo oh mayarche dukri
you take so much of effort
vaidal chulugira the sariramayarche arpa brojenamulaga
the word of God says physical exercise profit to the little
sarirathla ninga avlo oh mayarche dukri
you take so much of exercise in your body
porisalala porapadukkuka yel munna raavud
some for starting up they will take seven hours
ah ah poraptu 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 yanga paraptaja vanditia vandia start paniacha da hmm hmm
they would get ready get ready get ready and they are very late
ahvungipunnaan kulikey ponaamanga ipunnaan talayashiva ponaamanga yaadu yaadu thiripivaraadukulla time poidu
and when they come they will be already in a delay
ebriyurukko
how it will be
ana athumaavikurithu onakku oru bahara arukkana
but you should have a burden for your soul
athma enndrekkum deyunodu valakudiyadu
soul is to dwell with God forever
piriyamana mane
beloved
onathuma valakradu bole da nee ellavatila varano namayellavatila valakradu bole eda valanun bakro
I wish I wish you may prosper in all things even as your soul prospers
onadhi ajiviyathakurithu onakku oru kavanar irundukite
you need to be attentive about your life
onadhi athmaavakurithu onakku oru bahara irundukite
you need to have a care and worry for your soul
aranatha Eesu kettar oru van thanathumaavikadutha avanike lava man
therefore Jesus said if one loses his own soul what will he gain
indaki nee marithaal onnitthiya thay nee enga kalippa
if you die today where will you spend your eternity
athumaavai rachikakudiyadu inda vasana
word of God is able to save your soul
onri oni mudarpalanai matthu
one it makes you first fruit
porisalala vandu odane sattiyatuka kildpudivanga nyanasanadu vanga abhishekamvaranga nalavaraangalvaranga enlla pradestha padivanga nalaa oru spiritual growth la vandru
some people soon as they step into the church they will have a good spiritual growth entering into every stage of spirituality
aprii ovur vasanathay apriyay kada piddikaduka asapadu
they want to observe the word of God as such
mudiilena deosamudalokande kadru
if not possible they will cry in the presence of God
apunna enna arta
then what does it mean
avanukulla vedikapattavidekai sariyavalarchiyada idinarto
word of God sown within them is growing properly
adee bole inda vasana ondi athumaavai rachikala
so is this word of God will save your soul
abhina enna arta
what does it mean
oru van immaika haaghe krishtavai pinnbattakooda
a man should not follow Christ for this life
immaika haaghe krishtavai pinnbattuva naal avan parirubikappadakkavan
if a man follows Christ for this life only he is of all the most miserable
imma endu soluvadu sariraththavakal
this life shows our bodily needs
adu inda olakavalka ka oru Eesu pinnbattu naavam sarirathuka haan andharu pinnbattu
if a man is following for this life it means he is following Jesus for his body
adutta valkakekka oru thamirumuna avan athumaavai padukka pa
but if a man desires for the life after this life then he will preserve a soul
porumayinal ungal athumaavai kathukkala
impatience possessing your soul
ellakavolodu unirudheythay unathumaavai kathukkala
be vigilant to keep your soul at all means
athumaavakaduthu radhiga
don't destroy your soul
adu chara paavangal cheda athma nastamad
if you commit certain sins your soul will be lost
athmaulala saavunkaradu vedya thiriya
curse in the soul is not visible
ana namu veerodu tha varpo
we may be alive
ah adami avalayim paduchunna aranakani pusikum nalil nee sahavay sahva
looking at Adam and Eve the Lord said in the day that you eat of the fruit you will die
sahavay sahva na manukala poodu vanga nannachanga
they thought I will surely die and go down
illa
no
avanga veerodu tha irundanga
they were still alive
ana athma maranam endu deyunadiyasattathikka tu oni kalangadikum
but they're dead in the soul they only heard the word of God and the trumpet
mahimayay elundu poyirupa
they lost their glory
nirvanayana valkay unaruvai
they left themselves naked They left themselves naked. They were convicted and pushed into. The next part of the word of God is it works in your soul. That is why we see in Hebrews four, it is able to pierce through your soul. The word of God is able to penetrate through your soul and divide us and down. The word of God strives to make you a saint. How many of you have the efforts of the word of God today? And many other churches will look at us. Even our believers themselves when we go to various places. Within two minutes they find out our people. When the motherly people go to Chennai, they find out by their language. Just by the accent of their words, they say you belong to this place. You can find the Pentecostal list anywhere. And after attending a seminar, after finishing the ten minutes, they will say are you a Saint? If not. Even if they say I am not like that, they will say no, we understand. And you are coming with the scent of CPM. If the right word of God isn't you, it will convict your soul. It will not keep you silent. It will change your lifestyle. It will change one by one. It will change in the right time. At the right time, you will be changing your dress style. At the right time, your speech will change. Because I experienced it. The word of God will not keep you silent. According to Hebrews one three. This word upholdeth all things. It upholdeth anything. Who being the brightness of his glory and the express image of his person and upholding all things by the word of his power, when he had by himself a parthrasins, sat down on the right hand of the majesty on high. Upholding all things by his word. The whole universe is hanging in the space. It's revolving. It has a path. It revolves through the path, it revolves itself, but it will not cross even a thread area. And who is upholding all things? He who upholds all things will not uphold you. Because you are in his hands. And everything is controlled by his word. Psalm nineteen. Verses four and five. The sun is going forth as a bright chrome goes to meet. It goes with rejoicing. God has set an orbit for it and it runs its rates through it. Every day it comeeth forth as a bright chrome. It's not faint, it's not sluggish, but comeeth forth as a strong man. Even a single day, it's not worried about moving. It is rejoiced to run. See, what a beautiful word of God. Joshua said a word. And because it is the word of God, it stood there. What a good obedience it has. God upholdeth all things by his word. Whatever be the problems you are in. Until today, you and me stand because. When I said Lord, my foot slipped, your grace, your word held me up. So many powers to prevail. So many sorcerers. So many witchcrafts. So many powers. So many competitive powers. So many devils. But you and me, the church has crossed everything because. That word is holding you up. Word of God is upholding you. Therefore you and me stand today. He upholdeth all things by the word of his power. The word of God, if it upholds a man, it will suppress the power of the devil. Psalm hundred and five. Verse nineteen, what does it say? What did the word of the Lord do to Joseph? Joseph got a word. It was not a word, but a vision. It was the plan of God. The very day the word, the vision came to him, his life changed. After the word came into him. The sun, moon and stars made obeisance to me. Eleven sheaths made obeisance. He got that. That was the first step. The very second after he received this word. It started its work. What kind of work? Until the time that is when came, the word of the Lord tried him. Look at this. You don't like this. You don't like the word of God trying you, informing you, you just want to be upheld by it. We have come to the independent Pentecostal church. You have to get filled in the spirit by your own. But we are all coming to the IPC style. When we speak of the wonders, we just clap our hands and shout. But the word of God, until it was fulfilled, it tried him. If a girl should become a child. It cannot become as such. Write the first process. You're supposing you give your ornament. You ask them to make in a model, soon they do, do they give you that? They take it, wait, say the price of it and within four days, the first process, they send it through the fire. When the word of God comes into you, it will try you. Malachi four, three. Malachi three, two and three we see. The Lord will purify his people like a refiner, purifier of sin. And he will come as the fire. Joseph was some saint. A good youth. And it was a good certificate for him. He was a saint. A man without sin. Without mistakes. Good boy. But the Lord did not want that. The Lord did not want him to stop with just that level, but wanted to take him to the throne. Now what did I wrong, what mistake did I commit? What mistake did I commit, so many problems? We keep on striving, why of mistake did I commit, but what mistake did Joseph commit? But the word of God came unto him. What is the purpose of the word of God? To refine you and take you to the throne. True, you are a saint, sinless. Not stopping, just with that, God wants you to see on the throne. Coming out of his house, straight went to the pits. From there, so many blasphemies. He thought I am escaping the pits. He went and entangled in a terrible bathroom. From there to the prison. He thought, yes, it's the right word of God is refining me. And he tried to say something or the other. I did not commit any mistake. I am not of this. I have not committed any. He tried to lament, but nothing happened. The word of God refined him. Here may be sinless, but that you might reach an excellent state of Zion, the Lord, the word of God will try you. And, and that will believe and work in him. The word of the Lord tried Joseph until it was fulfilled. In a very simple way, we trace out the life of Joseph, but once you have a false accusation, you can see what all the ways he was striving. He asked together, he was in the prison. Without question. Without inquiry. No one in favor. Had he been an Egyptian, people would have come to visit him, but now he is an orphan. None to inquire. Just imagine the state. His parents, his brothers did not know he was here. Once I testified in the central jail at Chennai. Soon after that, many came to see me. One person came. Poor man. He said, I shall give an address, will you write a letter to it? Give, what is the matter? They put me in the prison when I was in the road. The policeman took him when he was going by the road and he was arrested. That time there was no mobile. Because he was directly taken to the custody of the policeman, he could not give the message to his people at all. My people at home do not know where I am. And he could not give the message to them. My people at home will be worried about me. Let me give you the address. And he said, just posted saying, your son is in the prison, come and see him. Look at the stage. Just think about it. At least for him, I was there. But none for Joseph. He himself should cry, he himself should wipe the tears. He himself will be grieved, he himself will praise God and then be silent. Such a path. A path of refining. Is anyone going through this path? Do you tell, I'm going? So many of us, we ourselves are going. Many of us think, I alone am caught in this path, but many others are there. The word of God does a work of refining in every one of us. It is then we will lament and cry out right in the pits. We don't know what to do. We can't just depend. We cannot tell out the truth. There is none to hear the justice. All are law, justice just occurs. Just think. Pityable situation. But this word. It tried until it formed him. Though his beginning was small, his end was the increase, because though paths differed, though he was put into the pit and then into the prison, but everything was done by the word of God. Though Jacob was not concerned about him, God was. Don't think God doesn't know the path, he is there. Therefore I see how the prophet said in all their afflictions, he was afflicted. Therefore in Corinthians, St Paul says, the rock of ages, it went along with them. If the word of God is speaking within you, God is speaking to you. If you are reminded, erodged by a word of God, that means God is touching you. I am preaching now. I have made it in many places. But right yesterday morning it came to me. What does the word of God do? Tell what my word does. Therefore don't just read it in a philosophical way. Psalm hundred and seven. Verse twenty. Hundred and seven twenty of Psalm. He sent his word and healed them and delivered them from their distractions. He sent his word and healed them and delivered them from their distractions. As to a sick man, medicine is treated. As he has been injected. As some treatment done upon him. When the word of God meets that person. Only medication is not necessary. To him that lived by the word, the word of God, it will heal him. To him that obeyed the word, the word of God is the medicine. To him that sent his life by the word, the word of God is his life. Any sick man, if he receives the word. What should I do to you? He said, Lord, I should receive something. Soon what did Jesus say? Go to the gate and they'll put lens in your eyes, did they say that? What did he say? Rishi saw it. The word of God touched him and he received it. Just imagine. Suddenly the apple of the eye opened and he saw. A child born without eyes. Their parents cried. Husband believed. And the eye came off. How will it not? The word, the Lord, he, he applied the mud upon the eyes of a man. And soon he received the sign. The word of God. Today, you may be coming with sickness. And Jesus said, behold of thy plague, and it left. That's what you need it today. Receive the word of God. If you receive the word, I heal you, you are healed. If God says, I have given you a job, no one can hinder, you will get it. One of her believer joined a partner with another person in his business. It was a little fabrication company. And the man who joined with him was a Hindu man. But what did he say? You should not make the pooches, you should not wash the items. Then I will be the partner. He said, I don't want anything, let the company be good and okay. First contract, okay. And first time it was okay. And one by one, for every order and contract, he used to pray for it. And then another big quotation and a contract. Then what did he say? My brother, if he prays, it will happen. If they pray in our church, it will happen. He went and prayed. And there was another person who gave a lesser quotation and took the step. And so the Hindu brother said. You told that you will get in the church. You got two and three. Now this is a failure. Then he came to me. My Hindu partner is asking me this. What is he asking? You told if you pray, you will get. Why it has gone as a failure? And he came to me. I did not take it as a serious thing. If it is for you, the Lord will pluck and give it to you. That time it was the word of God. He took that Mawadi contract. And he worked for one month. After that, he was no more. Don't know what happened. Suddenly the call came and they said, you are the second quotation, come and start your job. I think it is twenty years since it happened. Until today that contract has been done. Until today it is running. That God who gave it to them is faithful even today. And that Hindu brother is one of her main believer. And he has become a believer. Become a very important believer in a center. Why I tell you this? The word of God will not lie. It will keep on perceiving you until you reach the throne. It will come behind you until you bring it health for your body. It is life. It will come into you. It will heal you. It will save your soul from destruction. And there are so many people who were naive into sick bed, death bed, and now they are still alive. They were given a limit of twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours restriction, but they are still alive today. Even as Pastor Ernest was giving the message in Singapore, he felt in a heart attack and he was taken away. Doctors came and checked him. Famous doctors. Famous doctors. They said his time is barred. He will never more rise up. They went off. Next evening, he was to give the message there. They said, the Pentecostal people are like this. Because the word of God heals them. Is the word within you. You have so much of hope in a little pill. And if I put it, then I will see. If I undertake it, then I can forget my pain. And if that superb word of God is within you, then you need not take the pill, it will do a definite work. The word of God can heal you. Only those who are healed by the word of God lift up your hands. Those who experience the healing power lift up your hands. I had fell in the road injured at early and my, even my bird was just torn apart. And there was no other way to join it back because it was again and again broken. Therefore. If both of them has to join, then I has, I had to be bound on my skull. Because it is not standing. It's, it was just torn apart. Send the pastor said somehow we will put stitches. Because his occupation itself is message. And until his end, he has to say the word of God and die. Because the jaw is broken somehow, stitch it up. I could not speak. I could not drink. I could not eat. I could not brush. I could not do anything. Face is swollen up. And could not go to the meeting. Three or four weeks I did not attend in the meeting. Instead of me, Pastor John Paul came and took the meetings. And there were no one permitted to meet me and I had no power to speak. People seeing me through the window, they, they see me and cry and go away. I could not speak. One elder sister came to see me. Suddenly she started a chorus. Even if my Lord will be me, he does it for my, for me with love. One doctor, a believer can. What, he did not understand what to do. How to stitch? And how can we do that without giving the painkiller? Somehow what to do? And he said, let me see and go into it. I had already told this. I did not know what to do. Ten years after. Twelve year after coming to the ministry. What to do? It's like this, my state. After everyone went out. I took off my bed sheet fully. And then I started to cry. You know why I cried? Peter cut one person's. Peter cut one person's ear. Did you stick it back? If it is true. If it is true, then today paste it back. Don't know Lord what we will do. If that ear that is cut off, it was pasted again, why not my jaw? Ten minutes, I cried and surrendered. Again, in the morning, doctor and pastor came. Pastor is asking, what shall we do? Doctor said, let us wait and see. Two, three days dragged off. Then pastor asked, how are you? Yes, it stuck again. The time that I cried, my jaw. And it was. It was totally torn apart because of my injury. Once casting out devil in a place. And I was appointed to cast out the devil in another place. I am just moving. And the boy in the other place was waiting for me, but I was in the road. But by the grace of God, that paste up back. And the word of God will come to you today. Whatever is not sticked back, it will stick. Whatever is not healed will heal. Even it will be also, you will be healed. Cancer can be healed by the word of God. He sent his word and healed them and destroyed, loved them from destruction. They were forty in our batch. Forty in our eighty-four batch in the ministry. Twenty-six were sent to the ministry. And they were all in the sick bed. They were all happy enough. Everyone will get a malaria fever exactly at that time. I also got it. The fever came. It was not malaria. And they put me in the bed. I was so sad. And I am got entangled at the right time. In the night, I made a prayer. My in charge, he said, you just go away to your room, don't be in this bed. Then I prayed in the night. I went and ate a bread, that was the mistake I committed. Soon, the in charge came and took me. This is only for the malaria fever, not for ordinary fever. I was so worried, they took away that bread from me. Not even giving me a bread. Then soon, that fever started. Then they brought back the bread to me, I said, you just go away, because of you, I am now in fever. Then I prayed in Jesus' name. The malaria fever fled away and I went to my room. I believe the word of God is sent to you. How many years with your sickness? Today, God will send a word. Any sickness, in the name of Jesus. If he sends a word, it will not return without healing you, because the Lord will ask it. If he comes to the temple, then he cannot but raise up the bow down. If he comes to the temple, he cannot but heal the leper. He, it cannot return without doing its work. Psalm hundred and ninety. Verse one thirty. The entrance of the words give with light, it give with understanding and with the simple. Give with understanding to the simple. We may be illiterate. I have no power of understanding. Do not know deep doctrines. We may have no worldly wisdom. But if the word of God comes into a man, even though they are fool, they cannot err. Illiterate people, they give beautiful message. People who know no language, they preach in very different languages. It happens for true. The word of God give with understanding to the simple and make the fools not to err. People who do not know anything, give beautiful word of God. Look at the wise people of the world. They once were simple in their studies. They lacked in the understanding. They were out of nothing. Even Peter preached. Everyone marveled. How could he speak so much? And he quotes that verse. How is it possible? Recent. And they said, he is a man who speaks. And even the power in the word of Jesus can make the simple voice. If your children lack in wisdom. They lack in understanding. If any one of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God, that give unto all me liberally. Once, they asked me to give a message in a convention. And within that night itself, I went away to my faith home. That day, I thought. I was a little junior brother. I don't know if I became a young. They began their faith home at Madhranam. Suddenly, when Friday morning, they wanted me to preach. Thursday night, I fled away to my faith home. After reaching there, the center pastor said, he should surely come back and preach. I said, you can even keep me in punishment, take the church away from me, but I cannot come for the message. Then they left him. Twenty years passed. And suddenly, I got an illness. I can do anything in my church. I can do it in any somersault way. Suddenly, they called me. Instead, you are invited to give the message Saturday night at Kundra Thur convention. I asked, who is coming? He told Pastor Wesley. I will never come. I was local in charge of Annanagah Faith Home, even if they take away the faith home, it's not a matter, I will not go. Then the center pastor called and said to pastor, he is telling like this. He smiled and went silence. I had no peace. Suddenly, a call and Friday. Pastor Wesley is gone to Katak because a pastor died, therefore you don't fear. Then I said, I will come. Then I went to the convention message. Seven twenty-eight, I started and eight twenty-eight, I finished. Why I tell this? His word give with understanding to the simple. It will make wise than your teachers. There is a word in Psalms like this. Psalm hundred and nineteen. It can make you wise than your enemies. It can make you wise than your teachers. Wise than the aged. Psalm hundred and nineteen, verses ninety-eight, ninety-nine, hundred. The word of God makes you wiser than your enemies, wiser than all your teachers and than the ancients. The word of God has a power. It is a light unto your paths. Hundred and nineteen, hundred and five. The word is a lamp unto my feet. It's a light unto my paths. When the God of God is with you, in any place, you will have the light. Believe, hold on the word of God. The word of God will be light before you. It is a light unto your paths. Lamp unto your feet. If you are simple, it will give with your understanding. This word will impart patience and comfort to you. Romans fifteen, four. The word of God give with patience. Man of God gets patience and comfort through the scriptures. All of you seated here are short number. Or else, I believe the Lord would not have brought you here. If you were outside, how would I have been? In one meeting, one pastor asked, if you had not been saved, where will you have been? Then a pastor said, if I had not been saved, I would have been in the prison. A man accused should have been in the chamber. If the word of God is in a person. It will make him patient. No anger. No tension. Ultimate control. Many are saved. And he gets up and goes. He closes his eyes. Bees on his knees. Because the word of God is urging me, urging him to have patience. At the same time, if you are in the control of the devil, he will say, do tit for tat and never spare others. David came. She might bless him. He said, bloody man be lost. He splashed those sand upon him. David did not know what to do. He gnashed his teeth, praised God and went away. Abishia was there. Why are you going like this? He is speaking against you. And are you so impatient? Then you keep silent. I will cut off the dead dog. David, what did he say? Did he say, okay do it? God has sent him to blaspheme me. And he has sent him, what should I do? Then be silent. What happened because you were silent that time? Who fell down on his face first? The same Shima. Has the word of God brutal to you? When you fight with your husband. Struggle with your wife. When you fight with your neighbors. When they spit at you. When they drag you. When they get angry to you. Those who say the word of God makes me patient, lift up your hand. Because they have their problems, they pick up their coral in their house. The word of God should impart patience in you and then comfort. Let the word of God control you, bridele you. All this is blaspheme, let them do it. But the word of God will make you patient. There is a patience of the saints. And you need to keep it up. They will say, you are a coward, they will say the gutter is running in you. When I was newly saved. I was in plus two. And they cut off my brother. They sleeve him in a hotel in Tuticodi bestand. Somehow, he escaped. Night twelve o'clock, they informed me the message, my brother was slain. I and my mother went to GH. My brother was coming, brother's body was brought out of the operation theater. In forty places, he was cut so much injuries and I and my mother saw it. He said, my mother said, why are you doing this? All that has happened is happened, is gone. The next day, I went up to school in the early morning, in the morning. My elder brother knew it then in the morning. He was roaming about Tuticorin to slay that murderer, but he had fled away. And then he came to me. Where is that little boy? He is gone to school. And should we not cut him that night itself? I don't know if gutter is running instead of blood. How can he go to school? The man would not have escaped that night, he could have slain many others. That did not run in my mind at all. At that time, I was just moving about with the Bible. If the word of God is in you, it will control you. Else, the word of God is not working in you. You have so many worse words in your houses. I will make you a praise and a name in the earth. And write down, the word of God will give you patience. Beautiful verse in James, write down in a big board. Not swift to hear the worldly things. Swift to hear the word of God. Slow to speak. And slow to wrath. If the word of God is in you, it will give you patience and comfort. None will be there to comfort and console you, but if the word of God is in you, it will comfort you and you will rise up. This is the word of God. None can comfort you. You will keep on crying. You will close the door. You do not know what to do. A word will come. That word will speak. You will be on knees. And then it will wipe your tears. Practice this kind. You need not say, nobody came to console me and comfort me. But there is a word of God that follows you day and night and it will accomplish its matter. Revelation twelve eleven. If you take this word of God, you will overcome. And they overcame him by the blood of the lamb and by the word of their testimony and the love not their lives unto the death. If the word of God is with you, it will make you prevail the enemy. Lord, you sit and sit at the banner. You will see me, you will see me. You said, stand still and I will fight for you. And you said, the God of him shall bruise Satan under your feet. Moses all the time brought down the Lord, saying, you sit like this and he prevail. All the words that God said to you, wait. And you can prevail by this word. You can overcome sin. You can overcome saucer. You can overcome sin. You can overcome flesh. You can overcome the world. He that is in you is greater than he that is in the world. You can prevail the dragon by this word. And they overcame the dragon by the blood of the lamb and by the word of their testimony. Jesus, the devil came and spoke the word to Jesus. What did Jesus say? He told the next word. The devil spoke with the word and he smote by the word. If you hold on to the word of God. You can shine forth as lights, holding on to the word of light. Philippians. He who shines forth as lights, holding forth to the word of light. Stand on the word of God. Then nobody can shake you. If you hold the word, you will prevail. Because that's a sword. Word of God is a sword. Ephesians six seventeen, we see, take on the sword which is the word of God. The word of God, which is a sword, is the spirit. This word. Will help you in all aspects of the earth. To overcome the enemy. Give a understanding to the simple. Give you patience. Gives you comfort. Gives light to your paths. Makes you escape destruction. Will try and refine you. Will may have hold you at all times. Will save your soul. Will make your first fruit. John seventeen seventeen. It will sanctify you.
Our day vasana is satya.
His word is truth. He will sanctify you through the truth. If this word is in you. It will form you little by little and make you holy. Close your eyes. This word will make you holy and transform you. A sound you will hear. The trumpet will sound. Then you will be transformed. All those who believe, close your eyes, be on your knees. Lord, I bow down before this verse. Lord, I surrender. I want to run through thy word, which is a light to my paths. How many decide this word? This word that it may prosper the thing for which it is sent. If you wait for it, it will work for you. All those who say, let the word of God refine me, refine me and make me holy, close your eyes, be on your knees. This word of God will help us in any situation. Are you weak? The word of God will strengthen you. Sick, the word of God will heal you. Anger, the word of God gives you patience. Sorrowful, the word of God will comfort you. Failure, then your word of God will break you. Come with sin, the word of God will sanctify you. All those who say, I believe and accept the word of God, let the power in the word descend right now. He wants to heal by the word. Wants to uphold by the word. Wants to make you first fruit by the word. Just two minutes. Power of the word may come unto you. Let that life come unto you. Let it be have the touch. Let it lift you up. Say, Lord, let the anointing of your word descend and the power will send on you.
Vasana, you put in a channel, you are a super junior. Vasana, I know good, I know bad, I know good, I know bad, I know good, I know bad. I do it for the sake of the word, you use it for the sake of the word. Hallelujah. Reba khathra, ba khathra. I do it for Abhishekatho, I do it. I do it for Akkini Mayamai, I do it. Akkini Mayamana, what they go, I do it.